All right, we will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone here that would like to add an item? I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll move on to item four, the approval of the agenda. We will remove item 12, the exec session. Are there any other changes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number five is consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Saying none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is approval of the claims. And they're presented as a documents here. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is any discussion? Any comments on the claims? Saying none, we'll call the roll.
Worsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving right along, we'll get into item B, the department head reports. We'll start with the highway department. We do have a written report, but come on up, Brian, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, as you can see in my report, we've been dealing with a lot of snow and after that wind. We've got more on the way. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the things I want you guys to keep in mind when you're looking at this, the equipment, we're looking at the fuel and the cutting edges, the equipment rate and depreciation on that machine. So I know that one seems awfully high, but there again, the equipment rates are included in that, thinking about it as depreciation and the consumables. Is there any questions on any of that?
And I did, in front of you this morning, he, Brian had updated his report at the end of last week, didn't get in the packet, but there was a handout in front of each of you this morning with some additional information that he wanted included in his report.
Any questions?
Explain the 129,000 again, how you arrived at that rate?
Well, the fuel, you know, our consumable cutting edges, the equipment rate, and then also the depreciation on those machines that are being used. So I know technically doesn't come out of our budget as far as that goes, but we need to keep thinking about that as we move along. We're going to have to replace those machines in the future, not right now, but in the future.
Do you know how much of the 129,000 was the depreciation versus just out of pocket right now?
I couldn't give that number to you right offhand, sorry.
Thank you.
You could provide that to Commissioner.
Yep.
Pierce, thank you.
And then...
Any other comments? Or go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to move along.
You just move right along.
All right. Next thing on the list is dates to keep in mind is again, March 5th is our bid openings, and then the 12th will be recommended for approval in front of you guys. And then I will be gone next week for the annual asphalt conference in Pier. And finally, the manure pipe easement, we're working on that, but sorry, I've been a little slow on that with the snow.
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the report.
Let's hope for warm weather.
No wind.
Oh, we're going to get punched in the face for a few more snowstorms here. Item C, register of deeds of 2018 annual report.
Good morning. Yes, I'm here to give you our annual business and revenue generated from our office report. I have the spreadsheets to follow. They were in their packet, and I'll kind of explain each section as we go along. The first page is the 2018 report by month. Our office generated $383,309.50. The first line on the total, on the last column, on the total column, the first line is transfer fees, and the transfer fees are exempt code, are required on all deeds that are recorded with our office, and that's based on a dollar per thousand of the purchase price of the real estate. And the total for this year was $170,893.50. Then the second line is general fees, and that's the filing fees for the real estate documents, UCC financing statements, and location notices. And that was $159,642. Third line is marriage licenses. We issued 211 marriage licenses at $40 each for a total of $8,440. The certified copies are birth, death, and marriage certified copies, and the fee for each of those is $15, and we issued 2,704 for a total of $40,560. And then the last line is the copies and discs, and that is copies of physical transfers, which is we call PT-55s, for Farm Service Agency in Brookings and the Farm Credit Service in Watertown, and also any copies that the title companies make, and then just miscellaneous copies, the public comes in sometimes and just wants us to copy something that's just 20 cents a copy, so that's very minimal, but that's $3,774. Then each of the following sections are breakdowns of those totals. The second section is the filing fees, UCCs, and location notices, which are stock dams, and as you see, we had none. The third section is the breakdown of the technology fee. Just a little reminder, that bill was passed in 2012 through the legislature, and of our $30 fee for filing documents, $5 of that goes to a technology fee or a technology fund for the register of deeds office. $3 of that stays in the county, and $2 goes to the state to be evenly divided between the counties in August. And in the last column there, you can see where we got $4,688.68 from, excuse me, from the South Dakota Association of County Officials, and that is to be used solely in the registers of deeds offices. The third, or the fourth column, the certified copies are broke down in that, and of the share that stays in our county is $17,710 of that, and the state receives $22,850. $3 of the, each certified copy goes to the state, $2 stays with the county. Next is the share of the marriage license revenue. And our local abuse shelter receives $30 of each marriage license that we issue, which amounted to $6,330. And then the county keeps $10 in the, for $2,110. The last section there is, reflects the actual revenue from our office that actually stays with the county, and that was $343,987.50. We can go to the second page there, Stacy, thank you. And that just reflects the overall totals, the increase or decrease with the last, with 2017, and we had a decrease of the overall total of only $831. And then the last comparison is just a comparison of the number of documents. I like numbers and comparing things, so I put that in there. To me, it's kind of interesting, but our projected revenue for 2018 was $341,800, $341,800. And the actual revenue was $343,987.50. We came pretty close on the estimate. Does anybody have any questions?
Any comments or questions, Commissioner Pierce?
I just have my regular question for when you come in on your annual review numbers, and I see the money in the tech account. Are we any closer to looking at switching over to electronic recording of deeds? How's that going?
I hope to do that this year. That shouldn't be a cost to the county. If at any cost, it would be very minimal.
And everything from the switch over to the Tyler program, and I'm Doc Pro, I could not think of the name of it, everything is going well with that now?
It is now, yes. The conversion was kind of sketchy and tough. It took us probably about a year and a half to go through the documents and in our off time, you know, and tweak them, make them perfect. Not perfect, nothing is ever perfect, but to get them accurate as possible.
And in your state organization, those counties that are doing the electronic recording now, are you getting positive feedback? Last year, you said there were some iffy spots?
I'm getting more better feedback on that, yes. The number of documents that come e-filed is less than what I thought it would be, but I think as the years go by, it'll, it'll be better. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for the report. It's always, I appreciate all the pulling out information and stuff, too. Leads to not having any questions.
You're welcome.
Lot of data. Lot of data. No other questions? Thank you, Beth. We're going to move on to some of the other department head reports, and Vicki, we're going to save you for last, okay? Marty, you're up. Marty's done. Let's go to Kristen.
Good morning. I will try and make this brief for you guys. We had Safe and Secure out on Friday to look at adding three new RFID readers to the facility. One is due to 4H, Sonya and my conversations, adding one to the interior door there by their office. That way, if the facility physically isn't open, people will have to go through the 4H doors, just a little bit of added security there. Second, they're adding finally the one to the gun range. We ran into just a little bit of an issue of how we're going to power that, and due to the way that safe door was put in, where and how we were going to place that. And third, we're adding one to my office door, so that way, anyone coming in or out, we will be able to track that. National Guard is coming out for some Beretta 9 training. Great to see that relationship still continuing. We did install finally the new LED archery lights, so all of that is done, so if you guys haven't been out there, come in. The feedback has been fantastic. Everybody absolutely loves that, and it did make it look like a daylight appearance now, so definitely added to the appearance. With that, we have had 20 new archery members in the last 25 days. They are all Big Sioux Bowman members. We partnered with Big Sioux Bowman for their leagues, and now we have added, I would say, about 25% of their actual membership. We had about 40% of their members already, and the rest of them to be coming. Big Sioux Bowman, and I anticipate, will have about 90% of their membership as members, which, that's a relationship that we built back. Even with the weather, thank you, Brian, for bringing the snow with you, I guess, when you came. Our revenue has remained consistent throughout that time period. We have had several days of closure, wind, of course, being blown in, and there's just horrible conditions. Our gun league is still continuing on Mondays. Tuesdays hours that we added in at the first of the year has been huge. We're averaging 20 to 30 shooters on Tuesdays, so that additional hours was great. And then going forward, our meetings and usage of the space has increased. I don't have actual figures for you. I want to let it run the rest of this month, and I have 60-day numbers and some projections, but we have been renting that space out quite frequently, at least two to three times a week. Any questions?
Any questions? Saying none, thank you, Kristen, for your report. Mr. Hill will have you next. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
We've got a drainage meeting scheduled for Friday, I mean Saturday, at 9:00 a.m. at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. We're looking at 90% chance of snow on Friday and a 70% chance on Saturday. So we're not canceling it just yet, but I may have to send a blanket email out recommending that we not do it, but I'll wait and see what Mr. Gilbertson says. It just depends on what kind of snow they're referring to. Most of our people for that meeting are rather close by, so we may, we may still have that unless it's a super big storm coming. February 6, I attended a pipeline safety training held here in Brookings. Richard Ray Lynn and Commissioner Bartley also attended. Youth and Government Day events went well on February 12. On February 13, I was out in Pier, testified on House Bill 1226, which is a wind energy systems bill. They want to, there's a county in South Dakota that doesn't have zoning, and they put wind towers in, and citizens of that county, instead of trying to put zoning in their county, went to the state legislators to try to make the whole state of South Dakota have setbacks. So our testimony went well, the bill was defeated in the commerce subcommittee. We had a PPCC meeting on February 14. I took annual leave on Friday, went to Wisconsin. The NACO legislative conference is March 1 through 6. Brookings home show will be 9 through 10. LEPC meeting will be February 21 at the Brookings Ambulance Station and Education Center, that's that new facility where they're putting the ambulances. South Dakota Office of Emergency Management did a quarterly visit over the last two weeks. We do have a tri-state meeting tomorrow at February 20. I will not be going to it unless they reschedule it to a more reasonable date. I told them that already. Our safety committee meeting will be meeting tomorrow. We've got a radio meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening. I'll touch base with Commissioner Jensen, who's assisting me with that particular meeting, and we're just, we're going to wait and play that one by ear a little bit and see what happens overnight, and you know, if the roads are travelable, we'll have a meeting tomorrow night, and if the roads are not travelable, we'll probably have to postpone that one. One thing about that meeting, and on the radio issues, I've been in contact with Motorola, and they've got a system that they call mapping an area. And like, let's just take a town of White, for instance. They told, they gave me a quote of $800 to map that area for radio frequencies. And I just, I presume it's $800 per community. I have to do a little more checking, and I really want to get their statement of work on what this entails. But I may be bringing this one back to this board. If it's something that we can actually use and we can show that it's usable, it might pay us to do it for the whole, all the small towns, so we got coverage, but I just wanted to keep you informed. We have been working with Motorola on that particular one. And along that same one, we do actually have a draft wind tower agreement to place our repeater over on one of the wind tower met towers. And from our standpoint, it's been reviewed by our state's attorney's office, thank you, and the language in it matches what we need. Now we're just waiting to see if it matches the language of the radio communications company that owns the repeater. And what that would do, that would put the repeater up in the air closer to the eastern side of the county. So, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Bob?
Just a couple comments, feedback from your testimony. It sounds like you did a fantastic job out there.
Thank you.
You brought a lot of papers and the maps, and I think that really showed what actually would happen if this went in, and from the feedback, you did a fantastic job, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Thank you, Bob. Misty will take your report next.
Good morning.
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 First of all, I'll start out with, we had a meeting, February 13, our board meeting, our board meeting, excuse me, our board met, and it was about the spring and fall run. In townships only spray for the spring run. We made a motion to have the townships pay for spring and fall run. We're not breaking even, and we need to make this move, and that's what we've done. Just to give you an idea, I know I've told you before, but just to refresh your memory, the first run in 2018, townships paid us for the work we've done in their township, Now that is the first run, that's what the townships pay. Now, the second run, they do not pay for. It was a total of $11,098.94. We need to at least break even. I understand we may lose some townships, but we're also looking at using that grassland L. It'll be a little more expensive, but it's got a residue, a carryover, so I think within a couple of years, we should have everybody back on board and hopefully have a better control on our weeds. You know, there is a cost with this, but we've, we're the only township that actually charges a total of $20 an hour. I've asked a couple of the surrounding counties. One pays, charges $66 an hour just to spray the townships. We only charge 20. One charges $45 an hour, plus their chemical, of course, and we charge for the chemical, too. We're not breaking even. So just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Was there discussion about a rate increase? Besides the $20 up in the charge?
As of right now, no, there was not. This is an initial shock to the townships. I wanted to kind of ease into that in time. I would like to raise the rates.
So I'm trying to figure out, so you're going to charge the fall pass-through and stuff, we're not charging them for right now, but now you're going to?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And so is that going to be similar to the first roundup? I mean, is that same charges, or are we going to be basically doubling the charge?
Right.
Okay.
And with, and with the new chemicals, there might not be a need for the second spray also, but we wanted to make sure that we're covering, making sure that we cover the chemical cost. Our equipment and personnel charges are still minimal. We may look, we talked about it and discussed it, and with the increase of the chemical price, we're talking about next year maybe raising the charge per hour, because we do have some new equipment, and she will have better understanding on our costs, so we're looking at that also, so.
Commissioner Pierce?
I didn't quite understand the numbers. You said the townships paid $6,420, and then the actual cost is the $11,098, is that what you're saying?
No, that's the $6,420.54 is for the first run, which is in the spring.
And did the townships pay that, or that's what, that cost you?
Yes, correct. The townships pay that amount.
Okay.
Now, the second run, they do not pay for.
And the $11,098 is your cost, the weed department's cost?
That's correct. This has been this way for many years. I believe it goes back to Dave Ruston or Gary Halt era, just to give you an idea. It's been quite a while. So we need to make a change, and I, you know, as a board, we visited about this, and I think this is our best route for now. And I do think that the labor cost and the truck cost should go up, like Larry explained.
There is a township out there that has hired a private applicator to do their townships. Their cost last year was over somewhere around $3,500 for their total spraying for the year, but they're using a different chemical, they're getting better results, and that's, we're hoping that moving forward with this better chemical, we'll gain some townships back, but we want to make sure we cover our costs, too.
And what chemical is that?
Grassland L.
And what's its effect on the pollinators?
That's, that's, that's a hard decision to make. We're still going to continue the spot spraying, and we will only be spraying the noxious weeds. We're not going to be spraying Forbes, you know, we're not out to spray the whole ditch. Keep in mind, it will be strictly spot spraying. Milk weeds will be left alone. If there's a native Ford beside a noxious weed, I can't help that. I honestly can't. But we'll, we're going to be spot spraying, and it's, it's a mixture of Toradon and 24D is what the mixture of that grassland L is.
I mean, your pollinators, if you're using 24D or you're using the grassland Naxx, it's no different. I mean, it's where you spray, I mean, so. The change in chemicals, only the new chemical have carryover, which will carry over into the next year, and hopefully the weeds won't come back, so.
Misty, I would suggest that you go ahead and mail the information you're working with there to our office, and Stacy will send it to us. It'd be nice to look at your numbers a little bit more completely, since you have them all ready somewhere. It'd be nice to have that. Any other questions?
Just that when you email that, if you have any literature on grassland A and the L and the pollinators, if you sent that to Stacy, too, to share with us, that'd be great.
I will do that.
Any further questions? Anything else to report, Misty?
I do, real quick. Our annual meeting is March 7 out at the BCOAC, starting at 10 o'clock, and our meeting will follow at 1:00 p.m. I will have some more information for the townships, costs, everything. It's, I'm going, I'm putting together a PowerPoint, so that way they can better understand where we're coming from. They could see it in black and white, and also you folks, too. And you are all welcome to attend. March 8 is our bid openings down in the finance office at 11:00 a.m. And then I will be attending the weed and pest conference in Huron tomorrow through Friday, so if anyone needs me, I'm available by phone.
Yeah, and your PowerPoint presentation, could you also send that to Stacy after you get it ready, and then she could disseminate that or maybe even put it on our website, so people that can't make the meeting can look at it? They may not understand the presentation, but at least they can look at the slides and the data that you provide.
Sure can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike? Why are you here? Thought I'd throw that out at you, what the heck, you know?
I was going to watch it on TV later.
Yeah, okay. You can hear yourself saying, "I have nothing to report." Vicki will take you next, thank you. Maybe just hit some highlights before a 9 o'clock meeting here.
Yep. I will. To give you an update, we did receive the CPI from the Department of Revenue, and for 19 payable in 20 taxes, the CPI is 2.4. So that went up from last year, so that's good news, so we did get that information. And also, we received the bank franchise tax, and that was actually distributed through apportioning, it is going out today, actually. And that came in at 107,000 more than last year. Last year was a total of 597,750. This year is 704,791. And the county's... And the county's portion of that is 35,624 increase. The schools was a 58,000 increase, cities 11,200, townships 1,318, and the water is 193. So, that does vary quite a bit from year to year, but this year it was up. So, that is good news. And, do you wanna?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do our 9:00, and then we'll get you back up for the rest of it. Because you have several items yet on the agenda, so. We'll move on to our scheduled item, uh, agenda item. So, number 7A is 9:00 AM. Caleb Height with the United Living Center, and Bill Ritterath with the Larson Foundation. Item is an action I, action to approve the resolution number 19-05, a resolution to consent to a lease and assignment thereof in connection with an economic development bond previously issued by the county to finance improvements to facilities owned by United Retirement Center. So, we'll start with an action to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Well, we'll have comments. You have the floor.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Yep, I'm Caleb Height, Administrator at United Living Community. For the most part, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I wanted to just open up to any questions you guys may have.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Pierce, you look like you have one.
I have a question, but it's for Mr. Nelson.
Okay, you may ask Mr. Nelson.
And this would have been on our agenda the time before last, I think. But, Mr. Nelson took it off to look to make sure that this change does not impact our ability to do our bonding on the jail if, if we're moving forward on that this year, because we have that $10 million limit, and maybe you would tell us what you learned.
Yeah, so we've had an opportunity to review this, and it does not affect that bond regarding the jail. This bond is actually owned separately by the bank, and if ULC, they're solely responsible for repaying this. So, it's not gonna affect the bond at all.
Okay. Any further questions? Caleb, any other follow-up? All right, with that, we will call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2 here is an action to approve agreement number 19-08, a consent to lease and assignment. We needed a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this? Any comments? Caleb, no comments. Any comments from the commissioners? We'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Vicky, we'll have you come back up.
In your packet, too, we, you have the finance officer's report, and there's four be it noted items. The auditor's account with the treasure, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds statement of fees. And also in there is the cash surplus analysis. And I think we're pretty much on schedule for what we have in prior years. We're at 22.07%. And that is pretty much normal for January of other years, so. And then, we also have two action items, the quarterly highway transfers and the emergency management transfers. The highway and bridge transfer is in the amount of 750,000, and the emergency management total is in the amount of 21,250. And that is the first quarter transfers of 2019. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
Any questions? Don't see any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Item I is an action to approve the first quarter as per budget appropriations. Item 1 is, and we'll take those together, from general fund 101-4-911-4294 to highway and bridge fund 201-3-371-0000, in the amount of 750,000. Second part of it is from general fund 101-4-911-4290 to emergency management fund 226-3-371-0000, in the amount of $21,250. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion at all? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 8, regular business. Item A is an action to approve the resolution number 19-06, a plat of lots 1 and 2 of the Davis Farms addition in the southeast quarter section of, section 1, township 110 North, range 50 West of the 5th Primaritan Brookings, South Dakota. We need an action to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Bob, do you have any comments?
Yeah, we heard this at a February 5th regular scheduled planning meeting, and the Planning Commission approved, approved the 9-0 and sent it to this board with the recommendation that you approve it also.
Any other comments?
Just a quick comment. They're, so they're separating out the original, and then they're adding a second one. But, it's, it's gonna be added on to 140 acres. Why is it separated out, then? Five acres?
Mainly financial reasons.
Okay, but I, it seems like if it separates out five acres, then it wouldn't conform.
It's existing.
Is that, is the five acres existing?
Yes, it was an existing.
Right. I know there's an existing one there, but then they're gonna build a house on another one, right?
Correct.
And that would normally stay with 140 acres, right?
Correct.
To make it there, so why is it separated out? Which one, which one's existing? Lot 1 or 2?
Lot 1 would be the existing one.
Right.
Lot 2 is still tied to the, to the rest of the property around it.
Okay, but it's, it's not, because it's platted out.
If you give me a minute, I'll run down and grab the staff report and be right back.
Okay.
If you want to move on to the second one.
Thank you. We'll delay that for a moment, and we'll move on to B, which we'll probably need your explanation on, too, Bob. Action to approve resolution number 19-07, a plat of lot 1, Evenson addition in the south one half of section 20, township 109 North, range 52 West of the 5th Primaritan Brookings County, South Dakota. Needed a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, and I'm wondering if we need a report on that? Is everybody comfortable with it?
Leanna, were you there?
No.
I was there.
Oh, were you there?
Yeah, this one went through without any major discussion whatsoever. It was passed. The plat was passed. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll move on to item C, an action to approve resolution number 19-08, a resolution authorizing the purchase of corrugated metal pipe, bridge materials, and greater blades based upon the price established through the county of Beetle, South Dakota bid process. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion, Brian? Any comments on this?
Beetle County is the one to buy off of through that bid, because it's right next door to them.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And by see Bob is back, if he's ready. Yeah, yeah, come up, Don Mike. This is again on action on item A.
Can you hit the camera, Ms. Stephenson? The existing houses, lot 1. Lot 2 is tied to this, this total acreage here. The rest of the quarter, this is the quarter section, and this lot is just part of the larger area. Five acres is being cut off for the, for the financing purposes. But, if they came in, we wouldn't allow, I mean, we'd allow a house every 35 acres. So, this five acres is tied to 30 more that's outside the boundary.
Okay, but that's, that's where I'm not understanding, is because it's not necessarily tied to it. It's platted out, five acres. It, it seemed like you could still build that if that lot 2 wasn't there. And they wanted to build a house there, and it would just be basically that quarter, the 100 and whatever acres, but by-
Yeah, but a, a bank is not gonna, gonna, especially a young family, is not gonna give you a loan for 145 acres. But, they will give you a loan for five acres. A lot of times, instead of plating, they'll just go to a lawyer and get a footage deed. But, it's the same, exact same concept. Whether it's an official plat, whether it's a, it's a, footage deed, it's the exact same thing. It's tied, in our office, it is tied to 35 acres of this remaining quarter section. That's part of our zoning process to know, to have it in our records.
It still has to be a family member, correct?
Correct.
Because you don't want to have a lot 3 right beside that, another five acres, that somebody that's not really-
Yeah, I mean, if, if they come in and started doing that, then, then that's circumventing the or, the zoning ordinance. In a case like this, and we've got these throughout the county, this is not circumventing the zoning ordinance. This is allowing families to expand.
Bob?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I, I just, my thought is this, is they have this purpose or intent to build on it, and intent. And now, they go to the bank, and the bank denies them, so they've got this lot 2 already platted out. So, then they decide to sell lot 2 to the general public for whatever.
Then it would not be a buildable lot.
Right.
Because they don't own, unless you got 35 acres along, unless you got 30 more acres along with lot 2, you're not building.
Okay.
And we do have, I mean, we, we've got the, the-
So, they have the, the ownership is the same, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And so, then if they turned around and tried to sell that lot 2, whoever bought that would, would not have building eligibility, because they don't own the land around it to go with it.
Our, our zoning ordinance specifically states that unless it was planted before 1988,
Right, yeah.
these small acreages can't be built on. And this is, this is one after 1988, obviously, if it's, if it's 2019. But, the reason they can build on it is because they own 30 more acres.
And is that, then that acreage or that land has to be around that lot? It can't be like, I own 160 acres across the street?
Nope, it has to be, well, across the street, then it would be up to state law. Sometimes, I believe if I'm mistaken, ownership goes across the street. But, you couldn't own a lot on this. If you own acreage over on this side, that could not be tied to this. It has to be surrounding it.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Commissioner Pierce had some kind of, would you want to make a?
I, I did have a question. And it, the plating has nothing to do with the family relationship, right? That's not in our ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't, that doesn't have anything, yeah, to do with it. And that lot, and I guess I hadn't heard you say this before, Bob, and this is, I thought we went by parcels. And so, when that parcel is less than the 35 acres, they'll be able to build because of what?
Because that 30, that building eligibility is, is tied to this parcel, the larger parcel. Now, if they come in and, and want to do another house on the other side, then they would have to designate 35 acres to go with that house. If you got 160 acres, you can have four houses on your property. It's one house per 35 acres. Actually, you could have five if you had one existing home.
But, we, we don't really go by eligibilities. We go by parcel, right?
Well, you're making, you're, it's apples and oranges when you say eligibility. We don't have it in our ordinance as eligibility, like Sioux Falls, where you've got four building eligibilities, you build these to a quarter.
Right.
You're absolutely correct. We do not have that in our ordinance. But, we do allow, if they've got five acres, because if someone, if this, if this is planted, like someone's saying, and then all of a sudden, they sell it, someone buys that, and they come in to get a building permit, and you tell them, "Sorry, you're not, unless, unless you're part of Davis Family Incorporated, you're not building," then they would have to go out and buy 30 more acres from this, from this particular family to build a house. Or, they've got five acres that they can put a barn on and, and put horses.
Commissioner Jensen has a question.
Bob, say they build a house on here, and two years later, they want to sell that house. What?
The way our zoning ordinance is written now, they could do it in 10 years, not two years. I guess that's between them and-
And they can sell, they can sell the five acres. Okay.
Yeah, if there's not a house on it, they can do whatever they want with the, with the, with the lot 2. They just can't build a house on the lot 2. And that we do, do guard against down on our office when they come in to, to build. That's why we've got the N code program.
How does, and I hate to ask this, but I just want to be clear. How does this differ from the one that was turned down three months ago, where they wanted to do this, the, virtually the same thing? Is it the fact that it's the corporation that owns the 100 and, what, 44 acres, whatever that number was, that you said surrounding it? Because, planning is only-
I guess I don't have the one that you're referring to fresh in my mind.
Okay.
I, I would hate to speak on something that I'm not fully, don't have a, a report in front of me to know what to talk about. But, if you'd like to stop by the office, or I can give you a call on the phone, and we can, we can look it up, and I can get you the answer.
Okay.
Without the papers in front of me, I hate to misspeak and-
But, but again, just to be clear, it's not the parcel that has to be the 35 acres?
That's correct. It's, it's 35 acres that, that person basically is under control of.
And that's what our ordinance says? That's not our interpretation?
Well, I guess I don't have the ordinance in front of me. That, all I know is that's what we've been doing since 2003.
So, this is consistent with previous actions?
Consistent with the previous actions.
I think that was one of the questions we asked at night. Was this consistent with previous actions that it was?
It just seems like we're jumping over one, it seemed like the process to me would be, we would take out lot 1 and leave the other one the same. And that would leave the other rest of the land as 140 acres. Then, the house would be built on it, on the 140 acres there, there. And then, after that, we'd go through the process of pulling out lot 2, or that after it's been lived in and constructed to get their financing.
We see lot, lot 1's considered a homestead lot.
Right.
That could be two acres and, and be off by itself.
Yep, yep. I completely understand that, and that's why we can take that out of the 100.
And, and they would not need lot 2 to build a house. I could give them a building permit anywhere on this property.
Exactly, and that's what I would-
But, like I said, a bank is not gonna give them a loan. So, whoever, I mean, this, this is the family incorporation. So, that's what they decided to do, was to, was to put it in the five acre lot. And they may very well come in if they got another family member, but typically, they're not gonna, we don't, we don't have cases in the county where they've, and I understand what your concern is, that someone's gonna come in here and have a subdivision along this road. But, we haven't seen this, and, we haven't seen this, and, you know, we, we-
Yeah, I just, okay.
Any other questions?
So, you're basically doing it this way for the financing, though, right?
Correct. And like I say, other paper, other people go to lawyers and just get a footage deed, and then, and it's still down on equalization. It would still be designated five acres on a footage deed. It would show up on N code. Usually, it takes about a year on N code to, to show up on, on a land split.
Again, I think this isn't the right process to go through here. I think lot 2 is too early. Should be done after the building has been done, that kind of stuff. Seems like that would normally be the process.
Well, then again, I mean, it, if they just want to sell five acres of property, they don't, you don't have to build on, you can, there's nothing saying you can't come in and plot 200 feet little lots all over the place.
Right.
Question comes in, then whenever you want to build a house on it.
So, how, but how do you tell which lot, if you would do that, which one's tied to the land behind it? That's-
We, on N code, we can hit and see when that lot was platted. It's strictly on the plat. The date of the plat tells us if they can build a house on there or not. If that has a date before 1988, per our zoning ordinance, then, then we could allow a house unfettered. If they come in now, on this particular one, they have to show that they've got joint ownership of that 140 or whatever's left over around it.
I, I just didn't realize we could do that, that you could plat out because you have joint ownership around it. All right.
Any further questions? All right, we have a motion in a second on the floor, no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aight.
Pierce?
Abstain.
Worsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
No.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move on to item D, an action to approve resolution number nineteen dash zero nine, a letter of contract between Brookings County and Banner Associates, Inc. for construction administration services of overlay projects, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments? Brian, do you have any comments on this?
We're just gonna be, uh, relying on Banner to help us out with making sure our overlay projects, uh, go as well as they have in the past. From my understanding, they've had involvement in the past and it's went very well.
Okay.
It's a very small percentage of what we're paying them for compared to what we're putting out on the road, so I feel it's definitely worth its weight.
Thank you, any other comments, questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aight.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash ten, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in the Volga Township, and we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Action carries. Item F is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash one-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Oslo Township, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Worsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aight.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is an action to declare a two thousand fifteen Ram pickup as surplus property to be declared a total loss due to an accident, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Marty, is this one of your vehicles? All right.
Someone forgot to put it on the damage list.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item H, an action to declare several guns from the BCOAC as surplus property to be traded in, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Justin, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, this is part of our kind of redoing of our rental program, so we are looking to, um, trade these into the exchange, and then we will be turning right around and purchasing, uh, new guns for our rental program. So out with the old, in with the new, and, uh, increasing our rental program.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item nine is our com, commission department director's report.
The spring workshop is coming up March thirteenth and fourteenth in Pier, and I have, most of you have signed up to attend that. I do have raise, uh, hotel rooms reserved at the Ramkota for both Tuesday and Wednesday nights of that conference. Um, it does start, I believe I had the agenda, it starts, the first session starts at eight-thirty that Wednesday morning. So wondering if anyone, just kinda looking at that agenda, if anyone plans to not come out until Wednesday morning and then just stay Wednesday night? Or, um, if people plan on traveling out Tuesday afternoon, so just kinda looking for, see, Angie, your Tuesday, Tuesday? Are we- Mike is-
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Are we writing out together if we're all, bunch going out on Tuesday, I'll go on Tuesday.
Okay. Larry, do you know?
No, yep.
Tuesday, okay, um, I can reserve the traverse, so then we can, as long as I know that for hotel rooms, when it gets a little closer, we can plan on, um, how, how that travel looks together or-
Sure.
So, but I'll get the- Okay. And then, um, I've also included with my report the upcoming, it's, it's a little ways out yet, but the next quarterly meeting, uh, the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting, or our Ten County Meeting is in Bryant, Hamline County is hosting. That is on Wednesday, March twentieth, just to get that on your calendars now, if you, uh, plan to attend that. Um, there are a couple of legislative updates that I included with my report. Also looking for, um, the registration for the Naco National Convention is going to open soon. I believe last year it was right around the first, first part of March that registration opened. Um, the dates are July twelfth through the fifteenth, so probably travel days on the eleventh and the sixteenth for that convention. It is ho, hosted by Clark County in Las Vegas this summer. Just wondering if anybody plans to attend, so that I can watch that registration very closely, because as soon as that registration opens, we wanna get people registered and, and get you into the ho, uh, the host hotel. Is kinda the biggest thing with that, because otherwise, um, that, that hotel fills up quickly. So just looking for, does anyone know for sure that they plan to attend that this summer? No? No? Okay?
Is that it?
That's, that's all I have, if no one knows for sure, that's fine, um, and then just some other dates that I had. Um, lots of things coming up here in the next few, few weeks. Um, we do have our annual col, uh, county holiday party, that's this Thursday, uh, it's at five-thirty at the VFW. Um, as Bob had mentioned, the drainage meeting at nine o'clock on Saturday, um, pending any bad weather. The next legislative forum is also that same morning here in this room at nine o'clock. We do have our, uh, work session on, um, the jail planned for ten AM next Tuesday, a week from today, it's going to be next door at the community, in the community room. As Misty had mentioned earlier, the towns and townships annual meeting, that starts at ten o'clock at, out at the BCOAC. Um, lunch, I, I believe they're probably gonna be looking for some RSVP, uh, we could maybe, if, if you know you plan on attending that, you could let me know, cause I'll RSVP for the lunch part of that, cause I know they have a, the meal that they bring in. Does anybody plan on it, I know Leanne's planning on going.
Let you know.
Which, you're talking about townships?
March seventh, towns and townships meeting.
Yeah, if I'm there, I may be there just for the beginning of it, but I have to leave out of town by noon.
Okay.
So.
Mike, are you planning on attending that?
I'll just be getting back from DC, so, tentatively.
Okay. Angie, do you know if you plan on attending that?
I'll be on my way back from North Dakota.
So, no, okay. And then, as I had mentioned, spring workshop, the thirteenth and fourteenth out in Pier, and then, as I just mentioned, the quarterly meeting of the, of the, the Ten County Quarterly Meeting, it starts at noon on March twentieth, and that's all I have.
All right, we'll move on to commissioner reports and discussion items, we did receive some correspondence from the Boys and Girls Club, Beta.
State attorney.
Wait, we skipped over, we skipped over, Dan.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan, you got something you wanna tell us?
Thank you, Chairman, I'll be brief. If the two ladies who've been patiently waiting in the back can just come forward, I just wanted to introduce, uh-
Oh, great.
The two most recent hires at the State's Attorney's Office, um, Mandy Kramer is coming over from the Clerk of Courts, uh, and Lisa Radke is coming over from the Police Department, where she served as a dispatcher, and, uh, Mandy served as a, as a deputy clerk over at the Clerk of Courts. Um, Ms. Kramer is gonna serve as our office coordinator, um, and Ms. Radke will serve as our legal assistant to circuit court. Um, so Lisa's been with the office for about two weeks now, and then, uh, Mandy's first day is actually today, so she's getting a very in-depth look at, uh, the State's Attorney's Office, attending county commission meeting. Um, but just wanted to introduce the county department heads to, uh, uh, our, our two most recent hires, we're excited to have them, and, um, thankful that, uh, they joined the office and, um, gonna work hard for us. So, um, that's all I have as it relates to, uh, the staffing, um, at the State's Attorney's Office, so thank you for coming, ladies.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And then, uh, as to the State's Attorney's Office annual report, um, I'm gonna try and have that put together, uh, for maybe the end of March, if we have a county commission meeting towards the end of March, I'll try to have that, um, those numbers and statistics compiled, uh, to report to the county commission. So, uh, that is on my horizon, and I'm, I'm looking to, to get that completed now that we're fully staffed on the support side, um, we're gonna be in a much better position to put that report together, so.
Thank you, any questions for Dan? Seeing none, I think, did we cover the correspondence? Boys and Girls Club, Beta Community Meeting, County Museum, thank you.
Those are just always added just for your information.
Our, our information, environmental training for CAFOs, uh, wanted to attend that, but I will be gone at that particular time, so we'll start with Commissioner Pierce for her report.
Thank you. On, uh, February sixth, I participated in the weekly telephone call for Public Affairs, looking at legislation going on out in Pier. On February ninth, attended the District Four and Seven Forum here in this room, and Commissioner Bartley probably is gonna say more about this, but we had a good turnout, uh, we had almost all the legislators. We did have something happen that was different from what I'd ever seen before in the forums, and that we had some disruption at the meeting. And, uh, the question's going to come up about whether or not, in the future, that might be a meeting that we should have security at, I, I don't know if there should be some conversation about that or not. And then on February twelfth, attended the Op, the Optimist Youth in Government Breakfast, which was very nice, it's always nice to see all those students. On February twelfth, I attended the debriefing on the Twentieth Street Interchange Overpass with the federal DOT. The gentleman that, one of the gentlemen that sat on the committee that reviewed Brookings' application participated in that telephone call. And somebody from HDR, who wrote the application for T that was successful this year, came up personally for our debriefing. And, um, what they reported is that the application from Brookings County had been recommended for approval. They had eight hundred and fifty-some applications, ours was recommended for approval at the beginning level, then when it gets to the next level up, they only take the ones that are highly recommended, and we didn't move from the recommended to the highly recommended category. The gentleman from Washington, from DOT, strongly encouraged us to reapply again, he applied four times before they were approved. And what he said about our application is that we have a good project, and what had really stuck out from the comments that he made is how I twenty-nine cuts Brookings. You know, we've got two-thirds on this side, one-third on that side, and, and, and that impacts a lot of safety issues, as well as economic and social issues for the city. And he said we had a, a good project, he gave us some ideas on how to, uh, polish our application and to make it better, and things that we needed to quantify better than what we've got right now, gave us some, some thoughts on that. There would have to be a new traffic count if we reapply again. Um, right now, and I don't know if this has changed in the last week since I attended that meeting, funding for the build program for next year, for two thousand nineteen grants, has not yet been approved, because of all this stuff with budget issues in, in Washington. And he didn't know for sure if they would be taking grant applications again in two thousand nineteen, he was waiting to hear that. If so, like I said, he thought we should, should go ahead and, and reapply. On February thirteenth, I attended the Joint Jurisdiction Committee Meeting, and we now have a draft that is on First District's website. And if there's anybody that's not on the committee that would like an opportunity to look at that draft, Stacy can give you the information on how to access that. So we've got a draft and we're working our way through, through that project. We still have a lot of conversation about the thirty-five acre rule in the joint jurisdiction area, whether or not we should have a zoning district for residential, rural residential and allow some subdivision development. There's still a lot of controversy on that, and we're still talking. And then on February thirteenth, I again attended the weekly Public Affairs Call-In Meeting, and during that meeting, Matt Krogman got the text that said that, um, twelve-twenty-sixth, the one energy bill failed, and again, he said that Bob was not here anymore, that, that he did a great job, and that that, that helped a lot. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Worsma, your report.
Uh, Saturday, February ninth, I was also in attendance at the District Four and Seven Legislative Forum, and Tuesday, February twelfth, the Optimist Youth in Government Day Breakfast, so it's been a quickly moving two weeks with just a couple things for me, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Krogman.
Yeah, uh, February sixth, I have Communities of Excellence out at, uh, Research Park, and we're moving along in that process. Um, we seem to be, uh, doing pretty well, um, and getting our work done, and, and it's moving along good. Um, I think we're gonna really start getting into more meat of that as we move a little forward, some of the stuff that they're starting at, I, we kinda have done already, um, and stuff, so, um, we'll keep working on that. Um, and then, um, on, uh, the February twelfth, we had the Youth in Government, there was a good show out there, it's always good to, to get out there and for that. And then on the fifteenth, I was at the Beta Public Meeting, um, on that board with Beta there, and had a great turnout there, uh, probably forty to fifty people there, um, and so had, got a lot of good public comment. Um, uh, we had a board meeting afterwards, and, uh, you know, we're roughly gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand short, um, uh, by the end of the year. And, uh, and so that's why we need to do something, and that's why we're having the public meeting on what are our options. And, uh, Beta, staff at Beta did a great job running the meeting, uh, very informative, uh, they presented very well, they had a lot of good, um, uh, statistics up there, and, and the first option was to, um, cut the weekend, uh, process, or ridership for the weekend, cut the weekend service, excuse me. Um, and that would save, uh, roughly about, they thought about seventy thousand dollars. So that really doesn't get to the one-fifty, so, uh, but another thing that came up was, we have not raised our ride rates for probably thirteen years, twelve, thirteen years. Um, a couple of our pier transit authorities just recently raised their rates, and so an option of raising the rate, uh, from two dollars to three dollars, and five dollars to eight dollars, uh, was, was also brought up, and, and a lot of people spoke in favor of it, that they wouldn't have a problem with that. The problem you have, that's a big jump, and one there, and some people had an issue with that. And so I think one thing we learned is not raising rates soon enough creates a large jump and a lot of heartburn, rather than raising them every three to four years, like a quarter or fifty cents, you know, now we're jumping up from two to three. And so, um, the, uh, the board did decide, uh, afterwards, uh, that, uh, we are gonna raise rates. Um, we held off on getting rid of the weekend ridership, we just didn't feel like we wanted to do that. But, uh, financially, doesn't get us to the one-fifty. So, um, we're gonna hold off for maybe a month or two on the decision on to, to stop rates. Um, but if we don't get anything different, nothing changes in our ridership or any of that kinda stuff, um, we'll probably have to do both, uh, for this year now, is that forever? No, I'm sure the rate change will probably stay through, but the, I think if we got rid of weekends, it, we would hope that we could bring it back when funding was available. Um, federal funds, we're gonna run out with two months left probably, uh, of our budget, so that's happened the last couple of years, and so our reserve has steadily just gone down there, so kinda getting to crunch time for Beta. And so at the meeting, um, there were, uh, city councilors, the city manager was there also, and then a lot of people that rode- a lot of people that rode, rode the bus. And there was a lot of good compliments about the Beta service and who uses it, and how appreciative they are of it. And Beta, you know, you've got to look at it as a quality of life issue, you know? It's got to be something that we look at as a community, that's important for our community, and we got to step up for it. So, anyway, that's kind of where we're at on Beta, so I know we invest in it, I know the city invests in it, United Way is a big investor in it, and then Officer Rideshare, and then the federal government. It was interesting, it costs $9.70 per ride, I think $4.50 comes federal government, 25 cents comes from the state, and $4.75 comes from local, which is also ridership fees that they pay, plus us, our investment in Beta too. So, between us and the feds, we're about 99% of it, the state kicks in about 25 cents, so. But I also, I think they also match funds for vehicles too. I think the state is involved in that portion of it too, which is capital funds, which is separate from the operating. So, you know, you can't just take the capital funds and put it in operating, just like school can't do that, you know, and stuff too, they're in the same boat. So, a lot of rules and regulations on those federal funds, so it's not an easy deal, but, so, something to think about, something to talk about down the road, and I'll keep you informed how we're doing.
Do you have a, just a rough idea, how many rides in a year? If you're looking at increasing by a dollar, how many, what will that do?
Well, and, and that's, that's what's, that's what's difficult, is you can't just take, you know, it's like 150,000 rides, okay? And if, you can't just take a dollar towards that and say, hey, we're done, because a lot of them are contracted rides, where you have a contract with like Advance is a contract, and so you may pick them up, and they have a contract price, so you're not raising that price until you change the contracts. And so, that's an option of going back and renegotiating some of those contracts, and I think that will happen too. But we also got to make sure that these rides are affordable for the people that are using them too, so, you know, it's a combination of public and some pay to use, you know, type of thing. So, that question came up, hey, just raise it a buck and we're good, and it doesn't, doesn't work that way, so. They would raise roughly about 50,000 is what they thought. So, still, 75 and the 50 doesn't add up to the 150. We're getting close, but, so.
Commissioner Jensen?
On the 6th, I had an opportunity to attend the Conservation District Meeting. Was introduced to the new District Conservationist, Jeremy Sova. He comes from Michigan, it was actually his third day, third day on the job, and a very nice gentleman. He gave a real good report and some new life to the Conservation District. On the other hand, keep in mind, the Conservation District has some 10-foot Freeman maple trees that are surplusing, and if there's anywhere on some county property that we could use some trees, they'd be willing to give those away. So, any piece of property, they're talking to the cities, they've got probably 40 of them out there at their tree farm that they want to get rid of, so, they're very nice trees, they've been trimmed up and taken care of well, so. On the 12th, attended the Optimist Breakfast, pretty well attended, it's kind of nice to be able to see the young kids and the government, and they got to come up, and I'm sure they went around the courthouse and seen all the offices. On the 13th, we had our weed meeting, I'm new to that, and learned a little bit more about the weed department, so, otherwise, that's all I have.
Thank you. My report on the 6th, I attended the South Dakota Pipeline Meeting again, that was interesting. From year to year, it was a different presenter this year, so some more additional information. On the 9th, I moderated the Legislative Forum for the Public Affairs Committee of the Chamber for Districts Four and Seven. It got a little interesting at the end, but we'll, we'll talk to the Chamber about that and whether they feel necessity for some security. We've never had an issue in the past, and I'd hope we don't have to go to that issue. On the 12th, attended the Optimist Youth in Government Breakfast, and that was well attended, but like Stacy, I know you guys gave a tour. Tell us a little bit about how you worked with the kids on that.
The kids sign up through their government teacher at school, and we had kind of a smaller group this year, due to missing so many classes due to weather, I think some students felt that they, they couldn't take the day off, but we had six students total, so we separate them. Half went with the city, and then half came and toured the county side of things. So, we had the breakfast, and then we met them here, and Mayor Corbett and I visited with them for about half an hour here in this room, and explained the chambers and, and kind of what, just discussed what the County Commission does and the City Council does, and then we separated them, and I took the three students that I had, we went around this building and toured each of the departments, and met with each of the different department heads, talked for a while about what their offices do, and then we went and toured the courthouse, and Court Administrator Jenny Hamrich met us there and toured the courthouse, and then we cap off the day by going over to the Sheriff's Office and the jail. The students really find that interesting, getting to see the jail facility and inside that. So, Marty visited with the students for a while, and then Jail Administrator Bart Siewe took us, took us through the jail, and we, the kids at that point were very excited because they realized they got the call that they were getting out early last week because of the weather, so, some logistics, so I had to get them where they needed to be around noon that day, but great students, lots of good questions, it was a good day, so.
Great, thanks for taking time to help those kids out, that explanation, I think it's a wonderful program. On the 13th, I attended the Lead-Around Table in the morning, all kinds of different discussion areas. At 9 o'clock, 9:30, we had the Joint Jurisdiction Meeting, again, working to come to some resolutions and get that joint jurisdiction ordinances written. On the 14th, I attended the PPCC, POD, and don't ask me what all those letters are for, but it's basically a committee that Bob kind of runs, he'll. The 15th, we had a retirement party for Kathy Hansen, the office manager over at the jail, and I liked that was very well attended, and we, we did a little thing differently this time, we did present her with a 20-year certificate for working for the, for the county, and I've asked Stacy to look into, and without objection from the commissioners, I think it'd be nice to do some longevity awards for staff that have been around, and maybe even starting with five years. If they've been here five years, we recognize it with a certificate, longevity of some sort for appreciating them being here five years, 10 years, and maybe 20 years. And then, obviously, when they're finished after their retirement, which won't be any of us at 20 years, by the way. If you guys would like to do that, if you'd like to do that, we'll have Stacy kind of put that on her list of things to do, but I think it'd be appropriate to, to recognize county workers that have some longevity. Okay, that completes my report. I think the only thing we have left to do here is adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, you can stay here. Thank you, we are adjourned.